Good evening. I'll call this meeting of the Region 12 Board of Education at the border at seven o'clock.
Joe Abdella, Greg Kava, Victoria Salin, Stephanie Colnick, I'm here, Angela Macchia Rulo, Alex McNaughton, Justin Ongley, Jen Pody, Jane Sargent, Pete Tagley, and Mary Weber. All right, we're quorum.
Okay. All right. At this time, it is my pleasure to start the recognition of students. For that, we'll turn to our superintendent, Laurie, Dr. Laurie Rodriguez.
Hey, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I think one of the most uplifting aspects to the end of any school year are the many opportunities that we have to recognize our students and to celebrate them. And tonight, we will be honoring students in Agri-science, elementary, middle, and high school. So students, when I call your name, please come forward and stand here to the left side of the podium. I will be sharing a few wonderful words about you from either your teachers or staff members in your buildings who wrote on your behalf. So, and I think Emily Rue and Emily Judd are gonna help. I feel like I'm so far away from all of you, sorry. So, beginning with Agri-science and two outstanding students who received the Proficiency Award, Cameron Gertner and Haley Collette, please come forward. So each year, agricultural students in Connecticut are eligible to submit a portfolio of their Supervised Agricultural Experience, SAE, projects to the state of Connecticut to be evaluated alongside the other 21 ASTE centers in the state. This portfolio is called a Proficiency Award Application. Both Cameron and Haley submitted their applications and placed first in the state in their respective areas. Cameron in Forest Management for his work at Sullivan Farm in New Milford, and Haley in Diversified Agricultural Production for her work at Ox Hollow Farm in Roxbury. Both students will be recognized at the Connecticut State FFA Convention at UConn in June, receive a check for $250, and their applications will be eligible to be recognized at the National FFA Convention at Lucas Oil Stadium in October. These are also the first two Proficiency Award winners since our Agri-science program first began. Congratulations again to Cameron and Haley. Next is the Superintendent Student Award, Close to My Heart, and hosted annually through the CAPS, the Connecticut Association of Public School Superintendents, and our Litchfield County Superintendents Group. Awards are based on community service, service to others, and leadership service or dedication to the whole school community. Our students were previously honored, just so you know, at the Grand Oak Villa in Oakville, Connecticut. So I have the privilege and honor of meeting and talking with these amazing students and all of their families. Students, again, I will call you up individually and say a few words about why you were selected. Please remain here until all of you are recognized as a group. So we'll start with Celeste Columbo, fifth grade Booth Free School. Celeste is a kind, caring, and hardworking fifth grade student at Booth Free School in Roxbury. She has made substantial growth in her mindset and determination this year. Celeste is a member of the school chorus and can often be found making sure everyone is included. Most notably, Celeste is the classroom zoologist and cares for the fish and the leopard geckos. Celeste is consistently responsible, reliable, and a wonderful friend who deserves recognition for her kindness to others and her extremely strong work ethic. Congratulations, Celeste. Okay, next is Penelope Cooper, fifth grade at Burnham School. Penelope embodies positive citizenship qualities with her quiet leadership, genuine kindness, and self-discipline. She consistently demonstrates respect, responsibility, and empathy. Her unwavering commitment to excellence is evident in her academic endeavors. Penelope's involvement in student council, flag duty, classroom newsletter, and the Invention Convention highlight her dedication to her school community. Her aspiration to become an art teacher reflects her passion for creativity and nurturing others' talents as well. Congratulations, Penelope. Next is Marvin Cabrera Palacios. He's a fifth grader at Washington Primary. Marvin is a caring fifth grade student at Washington Primary. He is an avid soccer player who always includes others, shows kindness to his teammates and opponents, and displays good sportsmanship whether his team wins or loses. Marvin speaks Spanish and frequently helps Spanish-speaking students by translating for teachers and his peers and by offering friendship. Academically, Marvin is a talented mathematician with impressive skills and math logic. Outside of school, Marvin is an active member of his church, plays soccer, and loves video games. Congratulations, Marvin. Next is Brody Plans. Is he here? Not here. Okay. He's an eighth grader at Chapag Valley School. He's involved in his town community with his local Boy Scouts troop. He also partners with the local fire department for their big summer fair and maintains strong connections with the school community through athletics. He's a leader and someone who always works hard to better himself and those around him. Congratulations to Brody, and we'll make sure he gets his award. Next is Alexandra Quilly, 11th grade student at Chapag. Still not here? Okay. Alexandra is a junior. This year, she took a new student under her wing and helped her in countless ways. She has helped to translate important information to the student and has gone above and beyond in making her feel comfortable in the school. Months after the new student arrived, Alexandra remained supportive of her. There is no doubt that without her assistance, the new student would not have felt the same way about Chapag. She is thoughtful, caring, patient, and supportive. She embodies the true mission of Chapag and Region 12. Congratulations to Alexandra. And finally, Anna Swanson, a senior at Chapag. Anna is one of the most kind-hearted and genuine people in our school, according to staff and leaders. She has consistently gone to great lengths to make sure that a student with special needs has had a typical high school experience. In doing so, she has helped to create some very special memories for this student. Anna is most deserving of this award, as she has selflessly put others first without pause and consistently looks to help those around her. This kindness is seen in so many other ways as well. She is a genuine asset to the entire school community. Congratulations to Anna and all of our students. Next is our Student Leadership Award. The Student Leadership Award recognizes students who have demonstrated strong character and exhibited the traits of leadership, including decision-making, diplomacy, concern for others, and honoring commitments. We'll start off with Vienna Carew, eighth grader at Chapag Valley School. Vienna? Vienna is a student who has demonstrated through her actions to be a diligent, quiet leader in the eighth grade team. Whether working with peers or adults, Vienna is always respectful of others and their ideas and is always willing to help a lending hand, to lend a helping hand, excuse me. She continually strives to do her best, taking thoughtful academic risks in her learning. Her work is exemplary, and she has demonstrated time and again that she is also a lifelong learner. Congratulations, Vienna. Next is Nathan Fisher, eighth grader at Chapag. Nathan is a civically-minded leader in the school community who leads by example in the classroom. He is a kind student who is very respectful of his peers and his teachers alike and collaborates with his peers to help them be their very best. He is academically inquisitive and is never afraid to take academic risks. His curiosity defines his zest for his studies. What is good nature and positive actions make him a genuine asset to the entire school community. Congratulations, Nathan. Next is Sarah Germenson, 12th grader at Chapag. Sarah is kind, affable, and warm-hearted. She came to us here at Chapag Valley School as a junior last fall and quickly became part of the fabric of the school, well-liked by classmates and faculty alike. Sarah lends a deeper insight and a level of empathy and awareness to difficult topics, making classroom discussions richer because of her presence. She can often be found in conversations with teachers and staff members, engaged in healthy debates, or just trying to absorb that extra insight that might make the difference in her understanding of a topic. She is an integral member of the field hockey, swimming, and track and field teams, as well as the National Honor Society, Math Honor Society, the Spartan Club, the Leo Club, and the Debate Team. Sarah will be heading off to Quinnipiac in the fall to be a member of their nationally-recognized Physicians Assistant Program. She will be focused on earning dual degrees in Bachelor of Science Health Science and MHS Physicians Assistant. Congratulations, Sarah. The next is Ronan Phienen, senior at Chapag Valley School. Ronan is respectful, responsible, and conscientious are all words that fit when you describe him. Never one to shy away from a challenge, Ronan is a nose-to-the-grindstone kind of kid who expects nothing less than his best effort every single day. Ronan has always pushed himself to try new endeavors whenever possible. He is a standout in the Agri-science program and has been a role model in the food science pathway. Ronan is a valued member and leader of the soccer and track and field teams, as well as the member of the FFA and business clubs. This year, Ronan joined the swim team as part of his senior project, which focused on learning how to swim and training for a triathlon. On a side note, I previewed Ronan's senior project just this morning, and it was inspiring. I also couldn't swim until high school, so I understood that completely. Ronan's friendly demeanor has had a positive impact on our school community, and he will leave a legacy of kindness and compassion behind when he graduates. Ronan has committed to the University of Scranton, where he will be a member of the track and field team. He is undecided about a major, but there is no doubt that whatever Ronan chooses, he will be a great success. Congratulations, Ronan. And now I will turn it over to Don Shells and Mike Croft to recognize our top five academic seniors.
Good evening, everyone. I don't really want to upstage the superintendent, but I can't swim very well right now. And I also watched that project with great interest, and I think I could get coached by Ronan for sure. But so, we know our students show their talents and their abilities and their merits in many, many ways, not all of which relate just to class rank. However, it's more than appropriate that we take this time now to celebrate the excellence that we see among the five students who are graduating at the top five spots of the senior class this year. So I'm gonna announce now here the valedictorian and salutatorian, and then the rest of the top five in alphabetical order, knowing that they each have all of our respect and admiration for what they've achieved here. For this year, the valedictorian of the class of 2024 is Faith Bargelini. Faith is an outstanding student, oh duh, an outstanding student who has proven to be an invaluable member of our school community. Not only does Faith juggle with demands of the most challenging courses our school has to offer, she's also a year-round athlete. Faith's leadership skills have made her a natural candidate for the role of senior class president. And as the class valedictorian, she's set an exceptional example for other Chapag students to follow. In the fall, Faith will be enrolling at the Georgia Institute of Technology to study bioengineering. That's wonderful. Think you'll be great at that. Congratulations. And the salutatorian for the class of 2024 is Annabelle Churik. Annabelle is a student whose inquisitive nature and supportive presence elevates classroom conversations and inspires curiosity in her peers. We've heard that about a few of our students, and that's the, students don't owe us that, but it's probably the greatest gift they can give for their teachers and their classmates. Annabelle's academic accomplishments include membership in the National Honor Society, Mu Alpha Theta, and she's also, as you've just learned, our salutatorian. Outside of the classroom, Annabelle has combined two of her passions, photography and bird watching. This has served as the basis of her senior project. In the fall, Annabelle will be enrolling at the University of Connecticut as part of their exploratory program, God, I hate a school with a winning basketball program. As part of their exploratory program, that's wonderful. Congratulations. Rounding out the top five in alphabetical order, Kip Faison is a top student. Kip Faison is a top student, obviously, in the class of 2024, and an incredible role model for his peers and for underclassmen. As a member of the future Business Leaders of America, he sets an example of leadership and commitment. With all of his accolades and strengths, he's also humble and appreciative of his teachers and peers. Kip is also a year-round athlete, playing on the soccer team, the wrestling team, and the tennis team. He will greatly enrich the campus life at Washington University in St. Louis, where he plans to study applied math and cognitive sciences. Next, Sarah, I'm sorry, you can't stay seated for too long, Sarah Germenson. Dr. Rodriguez told you a lot of great things about Sarah already, but I want to double down on a few of them. Sarah transferred to Chapag as a junior and handled that transition with courage and resilience. She quickly became an absolute favorite among faculty and peers as a hard worker and an active participant. Her desire to pursue a career in the medical field inspired a senior project focused on opioid addiction and overdose prevention. I also attended that, and I learned a lot. I hope I never need it, but if I do, I'm glad that I went to your seminar for sure, Sarah. So it's no surprise then that her empathetic nature, coupled with her desire to help others, have inspired her to enroll, as you heard, in Quinnipiac University's program to become a Physicians Assistant. Congratulations, Sarah. And rounding out the top five, last but not least, Marie Sprong. If you take a walk down the corridor near the shop in the Agri-science Center in front of the big plate glass window, you will now see an incredible stained glass piece depicting, I think, our two cows that Marie made. It's beautiful. If you get to go look at it as her senior project. You know, I asked for some llamas, but no go on them, but the cows looked beautiful. That was a joke. It's a very cold audience tonight. Well, okay, but it's beautiful. You should go see it. And now let me tell you. Marie has an enormous amount of tenacity, determination, and ambition. She's not shied away from any challenge, even the ones that might seem daunting, even the ones that might not lead to guaranteed success. And she treats all these experiences as learning opportunities to help her grow and develop. She's known to be a responsible, dedicated, diligent student, also a fierce competitor and a leader on the soccer, basketball, and track teams. In the fall, Marie will be attending Northeastern to study engineering. Congratulations to all of you. Thank you.
Well, that was certainly most impressive. This is a night of all kinds of tremendous achievement by our students, academic and otherwise. But what I was taken, and obviously, kids that letter in three sports, this place is lousy, but they're all up there. It's just truly amazing, the diversity of what they do and the projects that they are and the directions they're headed. They're not just modeling success. They are all decent people. They are the kind of people that you want to know. And I think that that will set them apart in the future and will lead to even further success. And it was so good to hear from you all, to hear about you all tonight. It's great to meet you. And now what I'm gonna do is cause this meeting to be adjourned briefly for a little bit of a reception. So thank you all for coming. We're back in session at 8:43. Well, that was an impressive group of kids this evening. Really enjoyed that. I don't want to steal any of the superintendent's thunder, but it appears that we are having an athletic moment. And I know she's gonna take us and discuss that with us, but I never cease to amaze me the level of athletic performance for a school this small and how well we do and the kind of teams we field and the fact that kids participate in multiple sports, and I think it's just an amazing thing. So with that, I'm gonna turn this over to Laurie for her report.
Okay, so you didn't steal?
Oh, you know what I forgot to do? Before we get to the reports, well, at least your report, I forgot to ask for public comment in the conference. Is there any member of the public who wishes to comment on the items on tonight's agenda? I hear no one. Is there anyone who wants to take either of the minutes that are on the consent agenda off? Or amendment or discussion? Okay, in that case, those will be adopted now, superintendent.
Okay. You did not steal any of my thunder, Mr. Kava, but I did want to talk about spring sports, teams that are coming to a close. And it's been an incredible season. We were all just talking about that earlier before the meeting started. The baseball team sits tied for first place in the Berkshire League with a league record of 13-2, 14-5 overall, and one regular season game left on the schedule, which was this evening. And I don't know if anyone has gotten any word on the score. No one knew at the time of earlier, at least.
Well, the initial report was that they were leading.
They were leading, yes. Great.
Don't know where it went.
So hopefully, we hear a little more before the meeting ends. But the boys' tennis team captured the Berkshire League championship, as you know, with a 12-1 league record, 13-1 overall, with the finals of the All-Star Tournament this week. The softball team captured their second consecutive Berkshire League championship, and currently, they have a 14-0 league record, 16-2 overall, with two hard-fought wins over Newtown on their resume, as well as two very close and exciting one-run losses to Oxford and New Milford. The track and field teams competed in this weekend's May 18 Berkshire League Championship meet in Litchfield. And with many courageous performances, the Chapag Spartan Boys team engineered an exciting victory, capturing their first Berkshire League championship since 2006, beating the second-place team by the razor-thin margin of a half a point. So really, really outstanding. Oh, they, oh, awesome. So softball won. Excellent. And the girls' tennis team is participating in the Berkshire League All-Star Tournament, and I believe competed earlier today against Nanawog. And congratulations. There's even more news. Oh, I wasn't done yet. I know. We're not behaving this evening. I'm sorry. And congrats. And congrats to the hockey team. We received a letter from the CIAC commending our ice hockey program for the sportsmanship displayed on the ice during the season. And I know I put that in my Sunday highlights, so you saw the letter. But really, so much to be proud of in this community, not just, as you heard, in academics, but in sports as well. Yes, absolutely.
But do you see the trend across the whole thing? You've got a level of decency, kindness, and appropriately, you have great kids. 14-6.
14-6.
There you go. Another.
Right.
I mean, are we gonna run out of laurels to put on the champions here? I hope you have bought a lot of them.
So I wasn't, let me finish. That was the highlight of my superintendent's report. But senior projects are beginning, as you know, and I had the opportunity to stop over there today to preview some of the amazing work of our students. Very creative, and they've learned so much in the process. And I thought to myself, as an educator, this is what education should be all about. It really is. So I hope you get over to see at least one or two. Megan Berry recently found out that her dairy judging team placed first in the state spring CDEs held at UConn last Friday, beating Wamago by one point. It is. Yeah, the team included students Ben Fitzgerald, Emily Grant, Tim Colapra, and Rebecca Wheeler. Next up for the team is Nationals in the fall. Further, on Thursday evening, I will be attending the FFA banquet and awards, which I'm certain will be a wonderful celebration of our Agri-science students, staff, and the community at large there, and our volunteers who have helped us with that program. And I think that's all I have this evening.
Okay. You wanted the personnel, the retirement?
Oh, sorry. I do have more.
So we have retirements. Mary Clark, a school nurse at Chapag Valley School, effective June 14. That's the only thing on the personnel. That's the only personnel this evening.
Mr. Treasure. Since Nicole's not here to correct me, I'm gonna make a report tonight. First thing on our numbers, as of April 1st, and I don't have the May 1st numbers, we had 11.91% left in the budget. That's after the things that have been already taken out. So last year at this time, we were 12.51. So we're just a little bit behind last year, but three months ago, we were quite a bit behind last year. last year. So we're closing the gap. Propane continues to be a bane of my existence, the cost of propane. But add to that now electricity, our electricity, we're over budget by 5%. Also, at the last meeting, we did some transfers of monies from one account to another. They're all net amounts, so that doesn't have any effect on the budget. Nicole is still working on closing out the Agri Science Science Lab project. If you remember, the state holds back, I think it's 11% to like get the final paperwork. Nicole, well, the younger people won't remember this. It's about the size of a New York City phone book. Phone books were things that used to have your phone number in. Yeah, anyway. And the only other thing is, we're looking at the fees to charge for use of the facility, things like the planetarium, just in general, the space here, we're going to update the fees on it. They're not overly expensive. And for nonprofits, I don't, I believe, we don't charge anything. For outside groups, yeah. And that is my report.
Nothing new. Our next meeting is June 14 at 9:00 a.m. at Central Office. Yeah, I just emailed Debbie. Yeah.
Nothing new to report. We do not meet until next week. I don't know, the first week in June. Sorry.
And I saved a couple of items for this report. Because Nicole is not here to answer questions, we postponed till the next meeting, discussion of the Sherman contract to send their kids to Chapag. So we'll be talking about that at the next meeting. Also, a lot of the FNO meeting was spent on food and food services. We're having a little problem with the with the quality of the food. Ed Advance is not making any money on us, and basically, they want an extra $20,000 to keep us for next year. We're toying with what to do about that. But they feel that their staff is, they're having trouble staffing, and they feel that the staff is being disrespected. So two things that we're going to work on in the FNO. And that is it. What? The food cafeteria. Well, we're trying to see if there's, we have an alternative.
Have, before we go with an alternative, if we go with an alternative, I think it would be a good idea to reach out to the students because I'm never going to.
Yeah, I can't say what they call it because it's being taped.
And you are aware there's a, there is a social media page just about food. Okay. Oh, a lot of schools have that. Yeah.
We used to love to complain about it in high school.
One of the difficulties we have is not just, you can talk about the quality of the food. You can talk about those things. But another difficulty we have is the time it takes to serve the students does not, is not lining up with the amount of time they have. It takes, it takes them a good half an hour to get the food out of the, you know, out of the, you know, from the, from the back and sit down at a table. Lunch is over. They get a half an hour. And so we've got issues because frankly, we need to do a significant renovation of that cafeteria space to actually function in the way it needs to function. These are complicated and difficult problems. And so this discussion is really going to be interesting. I would point out to you, if any of you subscribe to or want to go online and read the Huffington Post, you will see in today's Huffington Post, an amazing article about the public school lunch service in France. It is a four-course meal, starting in elementary school, a four-course hot meal. Lunch is an hour and a half. Okay, because that's an important cultural period of time in France, lunch. Yeah, that could very well be, I'm not sure what the legal age there is, but I'm not sure there is one. But, but I will, I will tell you that the thing that blew me away was not that they actually had this as their public school lunch. What blew me away is the cost of it is about the same as lunch here. You obviously read the article, so.
Yes. But I also, I also must interject and say that they do the same thing in Turkey as well. If you see what they serve for public lunches in Turkey, you have your protein, you have a pilaf, you have a salad, you have a, and it's all healthy. It's all fresh. It's not processed, and it's, it's amazing. And the children get a very nutritious meal. I had one question, though. Prior to COVID, were we with this same company? Correct. So when we moved here, and my son, we came from Danbury, and my son said, my gosh, this is gourmet food that they have at Chapag. And he couldn't believe how delicious everything was, and he refused to bring food from, you know, home because the food was much better here. COVID hit, and he said, what's happened? I can't even eat anything. So.
Well, the interesting thing was is that there aren't a lot of kids eating in the cafeteria because, and that's one of the problems that Ed Advance is having in running this. And part of the reason is, is the time. I mean, if they could actually get their food in five minutes, sit down and have a reasonable time to eat, that might be a difference. But interestingly, during COVID, when the state was picking up the cost of, every lunch was free for everyone, everyone ate lunch, and nobody complained about the food. But apparently, when you pay $3, $4, $5, whatever it is, it doesn't taste as good. So that we've got that problem in there, too. So this is going to be a complicated thing, but we have to figure this out because we really, we really can do better. And I think we have to figure out how to do it. So there's going to be some discussion on that. Bring your pencil sharpeners. You're going to need them. Okay, Policy Committee met tonight. We had one policy, which you probably saw in your packet, 5111. This policy deals with ages in schools. And one of the main changes that we were discussing tonight is the fact that it used to be you could drop out at 16, then it was moved up to 17, now they're moving it to 18. So a parent, even with a parent's consent, the child will not be able to drop out until age 18. And so this, there was a, there was one reference to 17 in there, and we weren't sure whether that was correct or not correct. And the superintendent reached out to Tom Mooney, and he, he was jammed up and couldn't get back to her. So we decided to postpone consideration until our next meeting of that policy. So that will not be on tonight's agenda. So that's what the Policy Committee is up to. The Labor Negotiations Committee is in the throes of negotiating with our three, with three unions, the nurses, the custodians, and the paraprofessionals and clerical employees. We have met with all, we've had the initial exchange of positions and what we, what we'd like on them. And we will be meeting tomorrow with all three unions, starting at 4 o'clock and running until, who knows, 8:30 probably. So we're going to be meeting with all three unions on the tomorrow, the 21st, and we'll be meeting with them again on the 31st. And hopefully, by then, we'll have some settlements on these things. We'll hopefully resolve these contract negotiations. So that's where we are. And I'll keep you posted. Strategic long-range planning, Ms. Poe.
So we met on the 13th of May, and Carrie Snowden joined us, which we were very excited about. And Carrie and Lori really just discussed how they're really kind of creating the strategic plan and bringing it to life now. So meeting with the staff and faculty and really getting their input and starting to create a K-12 council. So, and they're asking for volunteers, which has been very well received. So you're getting a lot of volunteers to help create the council from kindergarten through 12th grade, which will really allow there to be a lot of differing opinions, but everybody coming together and kind of meeting of the mind, so to speak. They're also really excited about a lot of PD opportunities. They have some wonderful people coming for professional development in August. And then isn't that in October as well, I believe? I have it here. I'm sorry. Is that right?
Oh, yes, we have, it's actually both from Ed Advance. So we're going to have Jonathan Costa will be with us, and he's going to work on Fortune of a Graduate, which we're now turning into Vision of a Learner. We think that has better meaning to it. And then we have Ron Ber, well, Caroline Calhoun from Ed Advance is going to help us with getting back to understanding by design and using conceptual frameworks. And so everybody who's writing curriculum will be trained. And so everybody will be on the same page. That's a big step forward here. And then Ron Berger, who's just really renowned, will be here during the, not during convocation, but on the, I believe it's the second day, he's going to do a keynote for the entire staff and then work with the elementary in a workshop and the middle high school in workshop. And it really is around student models and you, and looking for what, how we make sure that students understand what quality actually looks like, and using models to do that. He's just outstanding. If you've seen any of his, we're actually reading one of his books. He's written many books and has tons of videos out there. The famous one is The Butterfly, where he shows the different modeling and the peer feedback given to a young, young child, and how it went from a very primitive kind of, you know, first draft of the, of what he called a scientific butterfly, all the way through to a beautiful, a very intricate butterfly, just from peer feedback. And it's just amazing. And it really, it's K-12. I mean, it really will resonate with any, any staff member, any teacher who works with children. So we're really excited. We have a really great lineup. I don't think in all my years, to be honest with you, we haven't had this kind of excitement. And Carrie Snowden is finding that staff is super excited. You know, she put this, as you said, the K-12 council, which is going to really show and help with the vertical alignment. She now has like, she got 14, right, like, I think it's 14. I don't know what, what it is now, if she got any new ones. But it will be a cross-section of every, you know, every subject, every grade level. And I think it's going to, you're just going to see some real positive changes from this, and all with the strategic plan in mind.
Well, it's so exciting now to be able to kind of see it unfold and come to life with all the excitement that the staff and you and Carrie are bringing to it. So thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll move on to old business. I'd like to know if there's a motion to approve for a second reading, policy 5118.3, non-resident attendance. Moved, is there a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, saying nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. It's unanimous. It's 11 to nothing. Is there a motion to approve for a second reading, policy 5131.81, use of private technological devices by students? Moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed, nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. All right, that's approved. Is there a motion to approve for a second reading, policy 6141.321, student use of district computers? Moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining. Okay, that's passed. Finally, is there a motion to approve for a second reading, bylaw 9121, election of officers? And ties broken by law. Okay, is there a motion? Thank you. Is there a second? All right, don't blame us. Blame the legislature. Okay, is there further discussion? You want to vent? Okay, okay. All right. All those, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? All those abstaining. Well, that's unanimous. New business, there's no new business. We have not, we're not moving this forward this evening, as I said. So if there is no objection, we'll consider, oh.
An FNO meeting at 4 o'clock over at the Central Office, and then a board meeting over here at 7 o'clock. Would it make more sense to maybe move the 4 o'clock to 5 o'clock and move it over here? Would that be possible? I think it'd be easier on some of the people that, 4 o'clock meeting is a little difficult for them to make. Yeah, okay. Okay, we may work on changing that around, but I will get to all the FNO people and let them know for sure that it's changed.
Yeah.
Could we move the podium to the center? Because us over here always go, whether we see, so if we could move to the, to the center, that'd be great. Is that okay? Well, or to the side of him or something. Just sort of, sort of in the middle someplace so that we can see. Yeah, right. Yeah, that would be good. Yeah, that'd be good. We'll build it up high. Yeah, that's good. Or even over a little bit. That works. Is it okay for you? Thank you.
Thanks very much. All right, if there's no objection, we'll declare the meeting returned at 8:07.